Call to order a 7 o'clock meeting on this date, the 16th day of March. First order of business tonight is a special presentation, and Roy Jones will not be here tonight because of the situation that is going on among us, so we will go down to the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So, any discussion? If not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. For anyone watching right now, I will go back and say that we are live streaming tonight just as a practice to see if we can do this in the future. Our mayor is not able to be with us, so I will fill in tonight to see how we can run this meeting and push it on forward. Next thing on the agenda is a public hearing, considering a major subdivision, 20-01 on Sunset and Cherry. Kevin, are you coming to introduce that, please?
So this is major subdivision 2020-01, first one we've had.
Why is it called major?
I'm sorry?
Why is it called major?
A major is, it means it has to come before Planning Board for recommendation, then to y'all for approval. Preliminary, preliminary plats, Stu. That's right, yeah. Anything that's under, that's a total of three lots, we do it administratively, but the fourth lot, that's where that kind of triggers that. And this is just four lots. There is a fifth lot, I'll explain in a minute. This is a 1.4 acre lot that is owned R8 right now, two-family residential district on the corner of Cherry and, I lost, Sunset Avenue.
Sunset.
That's correct. And so what they're doing is they're an existing house right here on the lot, and they're going to turn this into four lots. This house will remain on its own lot. And then there is a fifth lot over here, which is not really part of the subdivision. This is going to be a recombination. They're going to shift this line over a little bit here, and then bring it down and around, so that they're kind of fixing a non-conforming issue that we've got there with that shed. They're kind of straddling the line, so that's their goal with that. The result of this is going to be three lots on which you can have a single-family home. There'd be one lot that would be big enough, they could put a duplex there if they wanted to, and that is consistent with the R8 zoning. As I mentioned, the one house that's already there will remain. See the zoning there? That has not changed. And this is the lot. Let me see if I can zoom out a little bit for you here. This is the subdivision.
I'm not used to looking at all this sun.
Sunset Avenue, Cherry. This is house that was here originally. The front of it does not conform to the setbacks, however, that is not going to be increased, so it should be a legal subdivision, and it'll just be on a smaller lot. And then you have these three other lots that are created here. This is the original line on the fifth lot, and that is going to be moved over to here, so that will be, work a little bit better for everybody. And Planning Board heard this and unanimously recommended approval earlier this month.
Any questions? This is a public hearing, and anyone that wants to speak for or against, now is your time to speak or forever hold your peace.
Well, I mean, it's an administrative hearing. I think it can be open, but it's an administrative hearing, though, so just to clarify.
Okay.
Motion to close administrative hearing.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Thank you, Kevin. Is there a motion?
Move approval for major subdivision 20-01.
Sorry.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, the same.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. We have one amendment adjustment that I know of, and that is, over the weekend, as you all well know, we've had some communication about what the city is doing with the virus. And so I'm going to add, where it's under new business 18, I'm going to make an 18A, and that will be the city's update on the coronavirus. May I have a motion?
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Thank you very much. Our first announced delegation tonight is Becky Wimhoffen. Becky, we welcome you. She is the Director of the Stanley County Senior Center. You may have to pull the mic down just a bit.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to all of you tonight with my request, and I hope I'm in the microphone. All right, we currently, in front of the senior center, have four handicap parking spaces. There have been times that we've needed more than four, and have needed an additional parking place in addition to the ones that we have in our parking lot. I called Ross Holzhauser to see if there was anything that we could do about this, and fortunately, he said that we could realign the parking spaces to give us an additional parking space, and the curb cut that is there can be basically left where it is, but it will be in a designated spot in front of the senior center instead of being part of a handicapped parking space. And that's presented some problems in the past. So I will be glad answering your questions.
Rock, go ahead.
How many spaces do you have in your lot?
In my lot, four.
And four?
Yes.
Four in the lot?
Yeah, I do. Mm-hmm.
So Ms. Wimhoff, is that four in the lot, and then four on the street?
Yes, it is.
Or is that four total?
It is.
So it's eight total?
Eight, it will be eight total now, yes.
Okay.
And Ross, you're saying you could put another one on the street? Is that right? Thank you. And that's basically what you're asking for?
That is why I'm asking for another parking spot in the front of the building.
Like a motion to approve?
Thank you. Thank you. Motion and second. Any further discussion?
Okay.
If not, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you. It's nice to see you.
That was easy enough, was it not? And thanks, Ross, for making that work.
Mayor Protem Hall, if I can add, that I think in speaking to Ross Holzhauser, there's enough physical space.
Right.
But the ordinance defines the area for handicap parking, so we need to expand the distance within the ordinance. So what we'll do is at the next meeting, the city attorney will draft an ordinance to make that change, and then at that point, that's when the change will become official.
That's very good.
So by our first meeting in April.
As scheduled as it is now.
Correct.
Thank you. So in another two, another three weeks. Under announced delegations, no one has, unannounced delegations, no one has given me any information. Do we have any Dana? No? If not, then I'm going to ask Dana Chaney, our HR Director, to come forward, and as she does, I think she's got Melissa Miranda on the phone. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor Protem Hall. I have with us tonight by phone, Melissa Miranda. She is the Vice President of Human Resources for Electricities of North Carolina. She's been with Electricities since January of 2013. Melissa oversees Electricities' internal human resources function, as well as Electricities' workforce planning and development, strategic priority for Electricities' 70-plus members. She's the Vice Chair of the Carolinas Energy Workforce Consortium, and she was recently appointed to the American Public Power Association's RP3 Review Panel. Melissa has been speaking to a variety of municipalities across the state in regards to the state of the state's energy workforce, and she has offered to provide that presentation for us this evening. So I am going to put her on speakerphone and allow her to speak to this group.
Thank you very much. Welcome, Miranda. We're sorry you can't, Melissa, we're sorry you can't be here with us in person.
Well, thank you so much, and I, my apologies for not being able to be there in person. I certainly appreciate your deflectability to be able to join remotely. Dana's going to help me with driving the slides this evening, but as she mentioned, part of my role, I focus on assisting members with new strategies that impact their ability to attract and retain talent. And some of those take the view of statewide initiatives and some are more member-specific, which is what has brought Dana and myself together. And what I wanted to do, as she has shared, is just from our work, what we see is the current state of our energy workforce, and really some of the challenges that we are seeing, some of our members facing. And I'm going to start the discussion this evening focusing more at the national and broader public power level, and then I'll transition over to Dana to focus a little more specifically on Albemarle. So we're going to go and flip to Slide 2.
And we've got that.
And, all right, so to kind of start off, one of the things I think is most important, kind of lay a foundation of what is driving the things that we are seeing within our workforce. And there are a number of immediate and long-term forces, and we could probably spend hours on each of these, but I'm just going to kind of hit a few high-level ones that we're really seeing that are having the most immediate impact over the last few years. And the first thing I'll point to is that we are at a time of rapid change in our industry, both from technological advancement to changes in customers' perceptions and our relationship with our customers. And those changes are leading to a focus on infrastructure changes, both physical as well as technological, and that, of course, will then in turn have a change in the demand of different types of skill sets, the number of individuals, both their traditional and non-traditional roles, that, you know, what we're seeing is with investor-owned utilities, as well as co-op and contractors. A lot of change at the present. The next force I'll point to, and we'll talk a little bit more deeply about this on the next slide, is that we're seeing a shift in turnover within the energy space, and what we're finding is a shift from what I consider to be predictable turnover, or planable turnover in the form of retirements, to something that's not as predictable, and voluntary turnover, and some of the challenges that that is specifically creating within the energy industry. And again, we'll take a little deeper dive on that in just a minute. The last point that I'll just note as a driving force is, you know, we are at a time where our society is shifting. We each hear differences in how a baby boomer and a generation next individual and a millennial, how we all approach things and our different tendencies. And regardless of how, you know, we classify different groups, the reality is, an individual entering the workforce now is very different than someone that entered it 10 years ago, or 20 years ago, or 30 years ago. And we're different from a standpoint of the transitory nature of the labor market. Individuals coming in now are much more likely to move around to different jobs, much more likely to change your career halfway through, and they want to have control over their career. And what we find sometimes is that the traditional structure of some of our jobs, as well as some of the traditional tools we use to try to attract and retain folks, don't work as well, of both retaining individuals as well as building an awareness and attracting people into our industry. That's just a few of the forces right now that are at play. So we're going to go and flip on to Slide 3.
Got it.
And, all right, once, thank you so much. And once we get to Slide 3, what I want to do is take a little bit of a deeper dive into the force around attrition. So attrition is nothing new to utilities. We have always dealt with a certain level of turnover, but historically, what we have usually focused attention on is retirement. We have for a number of years, I've heard myself say many times, of, hey, in the next 10 years, we're going to need to replace 50% of our workforce, and that has been the retirement, and that's been the case for a long time. What we're starting to see now is an interesting trend, in that we're seeing that retirement on a national level in electric utilities, the projected retirements are starting to decrease, which is a thing. The problem that we're seeing is that gains are being offset with voluntary turnover. So now, we are still looking at probably needing to replace the same number of people. The difference is, the people that are leaving are not people we're paying for, but not people are expecting, or not people that we have anticipated the cost of needing to replace them. According to the Center for Energy Workforce Development, we are now at a 13% voluntary trajectory within energy and electric utilities. The reason that's important is if you were to go back three, four years ago, we were at single digits. We have always historically had a very low turnover rate, and we're seeing that start to creep up. Part of that, again, is back to some of the trends we're seeing and the differences in our labor market and the individuals entering into labor market. And in fact, the Center for Energy Workforce Development and their GAPS and Energy Survey for 2019, their research and information I think from their members showed that if you had an employee that you hired that stayed with you for at least five years, that you already had a game. Because what they found in their research is that 65% of line workers that are being hired nationally will leave in their first five years. And that is, and we'll talk in just a minute, as to why, to me, that is very concerning, especially when you look at this specific type of a career. So lots of turnover within that first five years on a national level. Now, if you take it down to the public power level in North Carolina, if you look at the gray box there underneath the pie chart, what you will find is numbers that we collected from our members in our last utility assessment survey that Electricities does, and we saw a similar trend. So if you look at the entry and apprentice line worker line, that is typically going to be your group of employees that's one to five years, okay? Because it takes about five years, if not more, to move to a journey level or move out of an apprenticeship program. With 36% turnover there, you can see how that compared to the total line worker turnover of 19. So again, we're seeing the trend, both with the double-digit turnover, but we're also seeing that higher level within the first, you know, five years as we saw at the national level. And, you know, why that, you know, for us, we look at the fact we're traditionally a very stable industry, you know, and we are very, we've become accustomed often to using those long-term incentives like pensions and retirement medical, because some of those are not necessarily as effective now as they would have been in the past, and it's challenging, you know, many of our members to really rethink about what strategies we're using to attract and retain. I'm going to go ahead and move to Slide 4.
Okay. And we're there?
And, okay. And we're going to take, now, you know, we talked about turnover, I want to talk a little bit about, you know, what that means and why that is important. And, you know, again, there's a number of factors that come into play with the cost and the impact of turnover, some that are direct costs and some that are indirect. And there's really two main ones that I want to, you know, spend some time on, that I think are very important for public power especially. And the first one is around the area of safety. And the reason for that, I want to give you a little background, is an electric power line technician is an extremely dangerous job. What people often don't realize is that these jobs, historically, will always fall on the top 10 to 15% of most dangerous jobs, or jobs with the highest fatality rate in the U.S. And typically, they're in that top 10, if not 10, the top 10 to 15%. The other thing that's important to know about some of these roles is that, you know, we have some phenomenal programs within the state. And we actually have a great one just down the street from the mall at our Stanley Community College, that will teach individuals the basics, right? They will come in and they'll teach them basics. But it is enough to get you in, you know, right off, you know, starting out, some of the basics to get you in the door. What it doesn't do is teach you the entire job. The way you learn, this role is very similar to any other trade, you learn by doing, through something what we call an apprenticeship program. I like to say it's basically like earning a bachelor's degree by doing the job. The other piece of that that's important to note about how that, you learn those skills, is you are learning under the guidance and direction, and oversight of someone who is a master or a journey level person within that trade. And this is someone who has gone through, you know, years, a certain number of years of education, of on-the-job experience, what have you. And it takes someone about five years, if not longer, to work their way all the way through an apprenticeship program. So if you think about the fact that it's going to take someone probably about a minimum of five years to become an expert in the trade, and you have people that are leaving on an ongoing basis within the first five years, what you see is a constant churn. So a couple things. One, you have more likelihood, you have less experienced, less knowledgeable individual within your organization, and therefore creating a, essentially could be trade safety risk within your utility. The other thing is that you find is that your senior folks, who are the ones who are training and overseeing, there's the added burden on those individuals if they're having to retrain. And then the last thing I'll point out there on the safety side is, there are also certain things you cannot do unless you have certain years of experience and knowledge and training. So that puts an additional burden often on the folks, the more senior level folks, to be able to pick up some of the higher skilled work. So all of that, you know, comes into play of really looking at that impact from a safety perspective, of how much impact that can have potentially within your utility. The other, the only other point that I'll just note about this slide, that I think is important, is around the customer perception. And, you know, we are in what I usually will term the age of the customer right now. Customers, you know, really, we're seeing that change in that, that, you know, the power of the customer and the relationships our utilities have with customers. One of the things that is table stakes now for utility is reliability. And reliability is something that in public power, we have always been superior on. When you compare us to investor-owned utilities and co-op, we have, we have a much better reliability metric. And so with that said, you know, good reliability comes by expectations, and so if that alters it all, it's very easy for the perception, you know, customers to be damaged because of the perception that it's not a reliable system. And in fact, we have seen at least one member in North Carolina that, as a result of turnover within their staff, saw a negative impact on their reliability measures. They had a metric that was, that basically went from having an average duration of an outage of about 20 minutes, to it moving up to an average duration of about 50 minutes. And, you know, for you and I, who may be alman, trodding our cell phones and things like that, that may not have as big of an impact, but when you consider an industrial customer who needs that reliable power to provide us a service or a good, that can be very concerning. And that is what happened in that case. It started to get the attention of a large industrial customer. So it's just another point when we think about that impact of turnover that we may not consider, of, you know, could there also be economic development ramifications or customer ramifications? So we will go ahead and move on to Slide 5.
Got it.
All right, and when we talk about, I do want to just talk a little bit about, you know, what is it that drives turnovers? We talked about, you know, we have it, you know, what the impacts are, and what's driving it. And, you know, you can, you could probably do a Google search on drivers of turnover, and you're going to find a number of different surveys, but nine times out of 10, what you're going to find is the same items that are at the top of the list, and you will consistently see the same top two, compensation, how much someone is paid, and career path, or the ability to know their own destiny, what they can do to control their own destiny. And when you look within public powers, if I look at the, if you keep down the list and you look at work-life balance and insufficient challenges and leadership, the bottom three on this list, I look within public power, in any work community across North Carolina, those are three we hands-down absolutely knock out of the park. We have good balance because we are a smaller territory. You're not having to travel, you're not having the large, you know, territory that you're keeping up with with due, so it's much easier to go to provide a good balance of life and work for our employees. Challenges, you wear a lot of hats on a public power utility, because it's a smaller utility, you have to be better versed, or more well-versed in the different skills that are needed to get much more sufficient challenges there than you're going to get working for a contractor. Leadership, both at the utility level and office level. We've always had tremendously strong leadership, and leadership that is much more closely tied directly to employees. When I look at those three, and I say, you know, people looking at where they would want to grow and make their career, we have a lot there on those three. Where we run into trouble is on the top two, compensation and career path. And unfortunately, you know, what we find, and we'll talk about it here in a minute a little bit more, is that these are not created equal. And oftentimes, employees aren't possible, can't get past the first two to really then look and see the other great things that we offer in public power. And so it, for us, it really does, again, create a challenge, is how do we get things to a level we can, we can allow people to really see the full value that we can provide to them as an employee. We're going to turn over to page 6. Five.
And we're there?
And what, this kind of, kind of an extension of our slide that we just went through about turnover drivers, you know, as we said, competition or compensation and career pathways are really those top three things. Well, the competition in North Carolina knows that, and is very aware of that, and so what we are starting to see, and that will, I'll look at here in the next couple of slides, is that we are starting to see electric utilities focused to try to bring people into their organization. And one of the things I want to start with is looking from a base compensation perspective. If you look at an experienced line worker in North Carolina public power, and you compare that person to someone of an equivalent role that is employed at a southeast investor-owned utility, like Duke Energy or Dominion, on average, we find that that individual makes 47% more when you compare it to North Carolina public power. That's North Carolina public power across the state, okay, when we look holistically. One of the things that I find very interesting when I look at the trends over the years is if you make that same comparison, and instead of looking at the investor-owned utilities, you look at southeast public power utilities that are outside of North Carolina, okay? So not North Carolina public power, Dorville, South Carolina, Florida. And you look at those roles and do the same comparison, individuals can make up to 31% more in southeast public power outside of North Carolina. This one surprises me, especially when I see these numbers, because what we're seeing is that public power outside of our state is really starting to make strides to be more competitive, right? We're not paying at the level of the investor companies, but they're moving up. We're not seeing that same level of movement in North Carolina. And so I think it's hurting us not only on the, as we compete against investor utilities, but even with other public power utilities outside of the state.
So hold on one second. Hold on, Melissa, we have a question.
Melissa, before you leave that, this is Martha Sue Hall, and I'm Mayor Protem tonight. On that, you're, hello there. On your first, first comment there, base compensation, so for a layperson, does that basically says that if, that in North Carolina, any southeast investor-owned, in other words, privately-owned utility companies are making, their employees are making 47% more than what our Electricities cities might be making? Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, hold on to that one.
On average.
On an average. And then anyone outside of North Carolina, who is one of those publicly-owned, publicly-owned, not privately-owned, but a publicly-owned outside of North Carolina, would be making 31% more than our Electricities cities. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. The other note that I wanted to just point out on this slide, and again, thinking about those turnover drivers, is around the area of a career pathway, and some of what we are seeing as far as career path. What we are finding from feedback that we received is that, you know, if you're a young person and you're going into Duke Energy and they're giving you an offer, Duke is not just handing you an offer letter and saying, hey, I'll give you that. What they are doing is they are walking you through your entire career path. You're going to start here, they will have, they will show you, this is what you need to go to here, here's how much you will be paid here, here's how much you'll be paid at these next steps. It's basically outlining their entire apprenticeship and career pathway in tiny dollars. My understanding is as well, they're also providing incremental increases along the way. So for example, let's assume I'm someone coming in and I'm in the first level of their career pathway, they may have, they'll send you a, a pathway, they may have, they'll send me a, assume 6%, just simply if I hit certain types of, you know, training goals or things like that, it gives me some incremental, you know, incentives along the way. What we have found, and I have even seen this personally from, of some employees, that we have, the whole effort of left Electric Cities, is that, you know, when you lay up something to that level in front of a person and they can see, you know, okay, well, maybe I may take a pay cut, but I, you know, going here right off the bat, maybe I've been going at a lower level, but I know that I'm going to be at this level. That is very compelling. It is very compelling because it's basically, you know, showing the person their destiny. And we have had instances that I am aware of, of people leaving a public power utility, taking a pay cut, going back a level because of the certainty that they are seeing with Duke Energy or some of the other, other employers. So that is a very powerful tool that is being used. Well, I'm going to go ahead and turn us over to slide seven. Once we, once we get there, this is just going to take us a little bit deeper and this will probably address, you know, one of the questions in it that we had just talked about. And now we'll say, I'm not going to take a ton of time on this slide because I know Dana has some data that she's going to be sharing as well. But what this does is it indicates specific survey data that Electric Cities collects each year for, for our members. One of the things that we do is we will purchase published survey sources that will give us different market views, okay? And so just to kind of walk us through what these graphs are representing is if you're looking into the senior journey level line worker, that first bar, the Southeast public power, that is exactly what it sounds like. It is public power utilities within the Southeast, okay? Public power utilities within the Southeast as reported by the American Public Power Association. The second bar is a survey source that focuses on investor owned utilities, Duke, Dominion, Energy, those larger, you know, investor owned utilities here in the Southeast. And so you can see kind of where those bars are. If you move further to the right, what you're going to see is the public power benchmark. And again, Dana's going to take you through a little bit more of this, but this is just gives you kind of a sense of how much variation you can see within the Southeast depending on what type of a business model you are working for. The other thing that I always like to look at, survey data is something that you know is based on specific data collected from respondents to the survey. When I look at that Southeast investor owned utility and public power bar with the $40 an hour mark, that's based on input from specific employers. What I always like to do too is, is compare that to what I hear, right? Anecdotal data is a little hard to really, you know, hang your hat on, but at the end of the day, you know, oftentimes we, you know, at Electric Cities, we'll hear data from our members and over time, if you, when you're hearing the same input, then you know that you're, what you're hearing is really reflective of what's probably happening. And so what we have, over the last year or so, as we've collected exit data, you know, from members or from employees that I own, what we have found is that investor owned utilities in North Carolina really are, when you look at the, the first bullet under that kind of tan box, it shows that they're paying 40 plus for a Class A line worker. Class A line workers equivalent of a senior line worker. You compare that to the survey data and the chart above, you can see, that, that says to me, okay, yes, I'm seeing within the state, you know, what I'm seeing in surveys is aligned. What's concerning as well though is if you look at what they're paying for a Class C line worker, which is really your kind of starting point, they're paying Class C what we are paying our senior level line workers in public power, just to show the distinction. The other pieces that we are aware of, again, this is anecdotal data, is guaranteed increases of bonuses and salaries. We've heard, you know, 9% is what I specifically heard. And then they have become much more generous to as well with their 401K contributions. So again, when we take all that and kind of package it up from the, the base and then all the other elements, you know, it really is, we are seeing it's a very competitive market out there within, within North Carolina. I'm going to flip us to our last slide, which is slide eight. And I, I want to just kind of close out at least my portion of this. I always think this, this picture is a really interesting way to kind of, you know, the world we've been living in for the last couple of years in North Carolina. And just to give you a, a little bit of background with this is, is this billboard is called team official, they are a contractor, and the billboard is saying that they will offer to $49 an hour and $100 for him to come and work, come into Richmond, Virginia and be an electrical line worker. This billboard went up outside the Wilson Energy Operations Center and was there for a considerable amount of time, I think it's now come down. But you think about the fact that you have the contractor at this rate, so that every day when your line workers are driving in, they're seeing this sign. Now, they may not necessarily be inclined to move to Virginia or travel, but what it does do, I mean unintended consequence, is it also brings awareness to, hmm, I wonder what else is out there. So I, I share this to say, you know, show that, you know, we, we have fantastic touch to this, but what it really does too is it really, it, it brings information to, to employees and it's them starting to think and question. What we don't want to do is be in a position where questioning the value of working for public power and, and why, you know, questioning that they would want to go work in another place. So with that, you know, I'll, I'll kind of summarize and say, you know, I, I wish I could say that I foresee, you know, something drastic changing on the horizon. You know, unfortunately, I think we are probably in a, in a competitive landscape for, for a period to come. And, you know, I think too about the electric utilities within our member communities and how vital they can be to our communities. You know, and, and one of the things we really have to question at the time is how we want to position ourselves, you know, how do we want to be, how do we want to compete and what, where do we see gap to really be able to bring in the right talent that we need within our utilities to be able to continue to sustain that, you know, valuable asset to our membership? So with that, I will open up and see if there are any questions that I could answer for you.
Anyone have questions, Melissa?
I have. Most of your data dealt with line workers, but yet we're talking here about a proposal for all employees in the, in the electric, electric department. And I just did a quick calculation. We have a program, I'm a, excuse me, I'm a trustee at the Community College. We have a program for line workers out there, and I believe if, if the figures you gave me are correct, a line worker can go to that program, which is not, not a, a very long program, fairly short really, and can come out of there making $50,000 a year in Albemarle. That's $24 an hour.
That's not what our entry level rate is.
Well, that's what.
That's what the number is.
That's what she's showing as far as trends, but that's not our current entry level.
Okay, yeah, but that's, that's what she's showing on there is 2472.
Okay, that's not our entry level, so that must be something incorrect on her side. I've got some other numbers later.
I just, you use that.
Yeah, I was looking, I saw that same thing.
That's not our entry level rate.
So are we losing more employees to other municipalities or the public sector?
Yes.
I mean, the private sector.
If you've got, we can transition into mine and it'll show the impact to Albemarle.
Any other questions?
You have a question for Melissa?
Melissa? Then go ahead Dana, then give us the stuff that's more important to us.
So I'm going to bring this home to us.
Bring the mic up, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry. Okay, we've been having to transition. I appreciate your patience and flexibility. So let's talk about the impact to Albemarle directly and not just for our electric line workers, but also for all of our skilled labor roles and what we've been seeing as a city. Because I think what some of the trends she's been discussing apply to a number of our roles within the city. Here you see a graph of turnover that we've been experiencing from 2015 to 2019. And you can see 2017 and 2018, the retirements that she was speaking of, that's what really hit us at those points, that has seemed to level off. But then what we have began to see is exactly what Melissa was speaking to in that voluntary turnover. You can see last year for us as an organization, our turnover actually went down dramatically. I think that's a result of some of the leadership that has come into play, some of the things we've been doing to engage our employees proactively. And so you saw overall as an organization, our turnover went down. But that bar that you see that is sticking up there is our public utilities area, particularly with our electric line workers. So let's speak to what we have been seeing. Last year in 2019, we lost four of our mid-level technicians. That would be our intermediate and our senior line technicians. This year already, in January, we lost a key supervisor that did go to Monroe, and those four mid-level technicians, several of them also went to Monroe. Monroe, if you have heard or may recall that several years ago, their entire electric department walked out, and at that time, they made a commitment to pay some of the highest public power rates in the state, and they said that is something we will own and that is something that we have seen they are committed to doing. So we are losing staff to them. We also, Superintendent Wenzel is scheduled to retire on June the 1st of this year. He has announced that and we are already recruiting for that position, and that position will close this week, and we have been recruiting for that. So where we stand today as far as our existing staff is you'll see we have an abundance of entry level technicians, we have six of those. But when you get into the intermediate, the senior level, we have four of the intermediate and three at the senior level. We have four crew leaders, we have two supervisory staff since we lost the one in January, we have total crew members of 19. We have two current vacancies at this time and we would have a total of 21 when we were, we are fully staffed, but this is where we sit today. So you can see we have a lot of people in that entry level role, but not as many of the experienced. So let's think about, you know, what that does to our particular operation. Number one, it increases our risk, as Melissa spoke to, but it also increases our downtime. Crew leaders may be the only team members who can work on those hotlines, so that causes problems for us. Crew leaders may have to work in a bucket when by safety regulation, they should be on the ground supervising workers, but because they're the only ones who can work a hotline, they may be asked to go up. And another thing that may occur is we may need to de-energize power, take power down in order to make repairs, and this could result in outages for customers over a period of hours, just because again, that crew leader may be the only one who could work a hotline. The other thing that does is increase costs for the city overall because we don't have that experienced talent. So we wanted to put up an example or response to the February tornado, okay? I pulled this data from Mr. Wenzel, he was kind enough to share it with me. He said on, in our response, we brought in 40 contractors and spent roughly $118,000 to get power up. He said previously, if we'd had that experienced talent and had retained that, we would have only brought in two to three crews, 15 people, estimated cost of $45,000. So because we didn't have that talent that was qualified to work on the hotlines, we spent more than $70,000 in response because of that gap in our staffing. So go back to what Melissa was speaking to earlier. You know, we do a wonderful job in the bottom three, we have great work-life balance, we have good leadership here. I've heard other municipalities, as I've talked to them, you know, they suffer because they don't have supervision in electric, they can trust. We have been so fortunate here at the city of Albemarle to have strong supervisors in our electric crews. But what we need to focus on, as Melissa spoke to, is compensation and the limited career path. So we do feel that we need to modify our total rewards package. We do fully understand that we will never be Monroe and cannot claim to be Monroe. You see here, our hourly rates for our senior line technicians and our crew leaders, that higher level skilled talent, they are significantly below the municipal co-ops and the Southeast Energy. So what we're recommending, based on what we've seen, and our recommendation is based on the salary data we are getting from the league of municipalities, also the market recommendations we've received from a company called PayScale who has given us some free market data, we're recommending an immediate 7% increase for our electric line technicians that would be effective April the 5th for our electric staff. That begins to inch us closer toward the midpoint of the market. But, you know, this again, does not just impact electric. So going forward, we recommend that we implement a compensation study in the next fiscal year to really see where we are, not only for electric, but also for other skilled labor roles that we've been having some challenges with. And we would make those roles where we're seeing the greatest risk in regards to retention or recruitment, those roles would become priority for receiving any type of compensation increase. We would recommend that we do comp studies regularly, every two to three years, that is best practice, but that it becomes just a regular part of our operation so that it's not painful as we're going through those processes. Overall, we want to look at our total rewards package, not just compensation, because again, we're not going to be able to hit those high rates. We want to look at implementing some career ladders. Melissa Miranda from Electric Cities has already shared with us their entire apprenticeship program. There is tremendous opportunity to continue to partner with the Community College, to look at blended learning, some things we could do online, because this apprenticeship program is not just, you know, going to class, but it's also doing tasks. And each level, there are four levels, has 2,000 hours of on-the-job work that is required. So we would like to partner with Electric Cities and the Community College to identify key certifications and tasks to progress. We'd like to do that not only within the electric group, but also with other, within other areas of the city. We want to look at providing ongoing training and feedback to all employees using blended learning resources where we can, providing online modules and then face-to-face. And we want to adjust our performance management system so that people are getting more frequent feedback throughout the year about where they are in their career journey and the opportunities here at Albemarle, because there are tremendous opportunities here at Albemarle. Finally, we want to provide additional benefits options, and we're looking at that right now. We've submitted a request for a proposal to identify a benefits broker that can more fully meet the needs of the city, providing additional wellness resources and health plan options for folks who may not be served very well by the existing PPO. We want to make sure that we provide annual compensation statements to our folks so that they know the true value of working at the city. It's not just in money, it's a tremendous amount of benefits and investment in their future careers.
You made the comment that you would see, that we would see what our rate was, okay? That what Melissa had given us or given in her presentation was not what we were. What is ours? Because it, what I saw on your presentation was exactly what she had on hers.
Mine was for those senior level positions, and those are for the upper level positions. So her rate could have been accurate, but for an entry level line worker, Eric, do you know the exact amount?
Off the top of your head?
$18 an hour for the entry level line worker. And that, yeah, the, the issue's not so much on the entry level rate, it's for those higher level rates where we run into serious problems, and that's why we showcase that.
And those higher level rates are once they get two to four years in there.
Yes, five years, yes.
That's when they, when that's when we start losing.
That's where we lose them and that's where we're really at risk.
Okay, so follow through and then I'm going to open it up. Our benefits package with the city of Albemarle, is it as competitive currently with retirement and anything else? Is it as competitive as other municipal governments that have, like Electric Cities?
So you saw on Melissa's slides when she was speaking to the, the data, the, what did she call it, the anecdotal data? And one of those things she called out was the match on the 401K. That is something that we need to address because that is something that is holding us back, particularly for younger demographics, that's very impactful and that was something, is something I would like us to consider going forward.
Chris?
Good question. Do the investor owned utilities, most of them have a defined benefit retirement plan?
Melissa, can you speak to that? I would guess the answer is no, but I'm going to defer to you on that. Did you hear the question?
I do have the question, that's repeated for me, that would be.
Okay, so Councilmember Whitley's question was, do the investor owned utilities offer a defined benefit plan, a pension?
Typically not. No, we do, the cooperatives do, the cooperatives in North Carolina do, but typically you're not going to see the investor owned utilities. Most of them are moving more to a contribution plan like the 401K.
But the annual compensation statement that you would include, would include our contribution... But the annual compensation statement that you would include would include our contribution-
Yes, sir.
-to our defined benefit plan.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any idea how that compares to their defined, their 401K plans, defined contribution plans?
No, but I do have information from the North Carolina 401K plan. I have a list sitting on my desk right now of the municipalities that, in addition to the defined benefit plan, they offer a match on a 401K.
Because if we were to, you know, to do that, in addition to a defined benefit plan-
Right.
I don't, a lot of younger employees, I think, don't really think about the pension.
You're exactly right.
They see the 401K.
Right, right.
They can take that with them.
That is correct.
So.
Yes, exactly right.
Mr. Aldrich?
A couple of questions. First of all, Dr. Bramlett brought up the fact that we do have a program at the community college, a lineman program, which I understand has been very effective. How many people, do we know, Dr. Bramlett, how many people are currently enrolled in that program?
It's very few, and we had to reinstall it recently because we couldn't find people to teach it.
Right.
Okay. Second question is, where do we recruit from? Maybe Mr. Wenzel can answer to that, or maybe Dana, you can answer. Where do we recruit from?
So we love the program at the community college, and we recruit from that program. We go there to meet the graduates. We very much respect the existing instructor, Mr. Carpenter. We've been to their advisory meetings. The wonderful thing about recruiting from that program is he will tell you performance during the class and his experience working with them during the session. So he is very honest and a wonderful person to work with.
Well, I think the conversation's been really good, but I also think we need to be realistic in regards to what a municipality can pay. I mean, I want, I definitely want us to be competitive in our pay scale for not just our line workers, but for our police officers, firefighters, and everybody else. So when you look at what Councilmember Whitley was talking about, you know, when you look at the total package, I mean, we're never going to be able to pay what these private companies pay.
Totally agree with you, Councilmember Aldrich, totally. And, and we're not trying to get to that. We're just trying to get toward the midpoint of the market. We're not trying to get toward the top of the market at all.
Mr. Bramlett?
We've, we've talked only about linemen, but your proposal is a seven percent increase for all employees in the city's-
No, it's, no, sir, it's not, not at this time.
In the city's electric, in the city's-
In the, in the electric department only at this time.
Yeah. All employees in the city's electric division.
Only the electric department at this time.
How many employees do we have in the electric division?
There's nineteen right now.
So you only, we're only talking about linemen?
We're, we're talking about the electrical division.
Linemen and any of their-
Linemen and supervisory staff.
One in the electric division that works, a substation, anywhere, anybody that works-
Let's make, let's make sure we're clear on that.
Okay.
Because there are a lot of employees in the electric unit.
It's not involving the customer service.
No, sir, it's not. Just the nineteen in the electrical.
In the line, or one.
Yes.
In the field.
Okay.
Questions down here?
Another question in regard to the program at the community college.
Yes, sir.
You know, Kelly, I know we have a problem retaining, but on the, back to the recruiting, how we kind of got the BLET structured? You know, sometimes the police department will sponsor a candidate for that program. Do we do anything of that nature for the electrical linemen, since we have a hard time getting employees?
We're not having a hard time recruiting electrical linemen. We're having a hard time retaining electrical line workers. We have a good message to send to the folks in that program and have gotten good reception there at the community college.
I want to add one other thing.
One other?
We got women in that program now.
Absolutely. I'm aware of that. One other thing, do we have any measures in place, though, once we make that investment as a city?
Right.
You know, like a, maybe a one-year, two-year kind of agreement, you know, well, never mind, we don't, we don't pay for them to go to the-
That is correct.
So they pay for themselves, right?
That is correct.
All right. Go ahead, go ahead.
So to sum it up, the problem I think we're experiencing as a city is we can get them in and they work.
Yes.
But based on the numbers, we're losing them about year five.
Yes, ma'am.
And they're going to other areas that are paying more than we are at this time.
Yes, ma'am. And, you know, we have tremendous work-life balance here.
Right.
We've had several of those that, that left, and you're welcome to, I mean, we have the exit interview data. If we had increased our hourly rate by three, $4 an hour, they would have stayed here because of the quality of life. They're able to go to their kids' baseball games, you know, and that matters a lot. So we're not asking for a lot here. We're just moving, asking to move it closer to the midpoint of the market.
Part of the challenge, too, is just, as actually what we've noticed recently, it's just not losing folks after five years. We've lost people with over a decade of experience, and that's when, Ms. Miranda mentioned, that's where you start to get at the mastery level, and that's where our salaries are off. So what that, you know, there's a lot of information there, but one of the key points for me, key takesaways, and I think Eric Wenzel, our electric superintendent, Judy Redwater, our utilities director, will, both of the first things they'll mention is where that really impacts us, is we're able to get someone in the door, but we don't have that mastery and knowledge of our system. And then when you have an outage, there are certain positions, basically, based on their knowledge and experience and certifications, that have to be filled, and we don't have enough to fill those effectively to, and that, that does impact our ability to do it ourselves and not call in others, and then also our ability to do it as quickly as we have done it in the past. And we've lost somebody recently with over a decade of experience that probably left for, for probably about an equivalent position, but almost double to another municipality.
Almost double salary, yes.
So it's at that higher-end experience level, when you get them just to where somebody is really able to make some decisions, and of course, everyone's, you know, serves is very valuable, but when they start having that knowledge and you've got to that point and we're losing them then, we can get somebody in the door, but that's just that much more time-
Right.
-that, that we have to wait to get that knowledge back.
So clarify, you're asking for a seven percent increase-
Yes, ma'am.
-currently for nineteen electric people.
Yes, ma'am.
Employees, okay.
That is correct.
We might, could also interest them in educational base. You know, we're close enough to universities that we could pay for some of that-
Yes.
-instead of in, in salaries. Help them get to the place where they could make more money.
Right, and that is one of our long-term recommendations, Ms. Lauter, exactly that, is to put some career letters and ladders into place and help them get that training that they need.
That would be a good thing.
So to wrap this up, from your presentation and from Ms. Miranda's presentation, we can get them in the door.
Yes, ma'am.
We can keep them a couple of years, and they can really get their experience. And then when they realize that, though, they may live in Stanfield, they can go to Monroe just as quickly as they can come back to Albemarle.
Yes, ma'am.
And make a little bit more money. Is that what I'm hearing?
Quite a bit more money, but yes, ma'am, that's exactly correct.
Any other questions of Dana or of Ms. Miranda? If not, council members, my fellow council members, you see what the management recommendation is, and you see that it would be for nineteen folks in the city's electric division, knowing what this is all entailing. It's basically talking about a compensation study moving forward with some, go ahead, and we're, you know, we are saying with that that we'll go ahead and implement some more in the next fiscal year, but in this current fiscal year for the last three months, they're asking for a seven percent increase for those nineteen employees.
I would like to move that we do the recommendation of a seven percent increase effective April first for all city, for all employees in the city's electric division.
Is that the only thing you want that motion to say?
Um, do I need to-
No, then that's fine. If you, we can do them one at a time.
Okay.
That will be fine. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the seven percent increase effective April first for all employees in the electric division? Knowing that this money comes directly, any of this money, their salary comes straight out of electric.
That is correct. And we actually did specify an effective date of the fifth, because that is the start of a pay period.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify.
And I'm looking at Colleen, just to say, we do have them, this, all, all of their salary comes out of electric money. Is that correct? She says yes. Any further discussion on the motion as is? If not, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
All that's opposed, the same. Thank you, motion carries. Now, there is a second part of the management recommendation that we can move forward on or not. It is council's suggestion and our decision. And that would be to complete a compensation, compensation study for the city in the next budget year, then to prepare and address the composition challenges for those positions with the greatest recruiting and retention challenges.
Is that for all city positions?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because, and just to, not to hold things up, but I think it's very important that, that the other city employees and other divisions understand that we are going to have to address this issue, because not only are we losing, out of our electrical department, we're losing from the police, from the fire, from every other, other standpoint right there. And I think the key thing we have to do is we got to be competitive, and we have to understand that we're never going to be able to pay like those larger, we hear about Monroe, Monroe on, on several different fronts here lately, but we just have to make sure that, to Ms. Anderson's point there, we, if we're competitive, you get some of that work-life balance that you won't get out of the larger, larger municipalities. But again, I think that we are seeing a, you know, a challenge or struggle in other departments because of other municipalities wanting to pay their people more.
So there is, the floor is open for a motion. If one.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we do the, a compensation study for the city in the next budget year to, to address the compensation challenges.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion by Ms. Hughes, a second by Mr. Whitley. Any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
Thank you also very much, on behalf of the employees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, coming up will be Adam Kiker, and hold your seat there, Councilmember Bramlett.
Adam, change order, Kiker.
Adam, change order.
Good, good evening, Madam Mayor Protim and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. You all know Rob McIntyre. Rob, as a member of our team, has been leading our team on the day-to-day aspects of what we're going to talk about, and has really been instrumental in, in what we're going to go over. So what we're doing here tonight, and we'll get up to the top, I think this was my fault from earlier. What we're really doing tonight, Madam Mayor Protim, is to go, give you an update on where we are on a couple of projects, mostly the one that's under construction, is during the end of construction. And then we did get a funding notification a few weeks ago, so we're going to talk about that one also. We're not seeking any formal action from you tonight. We do have one particular topic we're going to cover, and we'll answer any questions that you may have, but if it's your pleasure, we'll come back to you at a later council meeting to request formal action. So just to give, I'll hit the high spots here, and I'll try and keep this moving, so please throw your hand up if, if you have a question. But the project we're working on right now is what we've called the Sanitary Sewer Rehab Phase Two, right? Phase one was completed in 2014. So we split the scope of work into two different contracts. One is a pipeline contract, and one is work at your wastewater treatment plant. Total project is about 6.2 million, and you see about 5.8 of that is a zero-interest loan, and half a million is in the form of, of grant funds. To give you a quick financial status, and I will cover these, Contract One and Contract Two separately. So originally, it was 2.9 million. We have had $19,000 in change orders, and they're about 74% complete based on dollars spent. And it's based on scope of work, they're probably farther along than that. They're about two or three weeks away from being done, from being substantially complete with the project and only clean up and finalized items after that. So we have a couple of pictures. This type of work is not real conducive towards photography, so it's a little bit boring. But this was taken right behind Lince's. You see the building on the right is Lince's Auto Sales, and you can see the creek on the left here. This was the most difficult part of the project, and credit to the contractor, they did a wonderful job. We really have had two good contractors working on both of these contracts. And this is another picture. This is a new aerial gravity sewer line that crosses a little long creek. This is just actually between Second Avenue and First Avenue. And this was done back probably in December, I think, early January. Okay. Oh, yeah, sorry, January 2020. So Contract Two has much, much better-looking images, so we're, we didn't include a lot for the first contract. A quick financial status on that one, following about the same path, no change orders to date on that contract. They're a little behind. The scope of work on this project has been impacted by the rain more than the other one, and they probably, not probably, they are not going to meet that April 10 deadline. We have been working with them. We are aware of, of their requested delays, and we're going to manage that, but they're really more closer to the first week of May, I think, from a completion standpoint. Lots of good pictures here. So if you remember from my first slide, we really touched on three different components of the plant, and we call them A Station, C Station, and D Station. So what, I have a couple of pictures of A Station, and I dated these pictures because they're helpful. In September of 16, when we first applied for money and scoped this project out, screw pump A1 was the one we were targeting, and it was still in service. And if you look close, you can see, you can see the water spraying on the blades. This screw is turning and actually in service. A year later, when we got funded and we were scoping, this screw had failed. It was out of service. You can see how pieces here were failing, and it was no longer being used by your staff. So fast forward to date, this was October of last year. You can see them removing the screw coming out of the pit. And just a few, two weeks ago, you can see the new screw is getting ready to go in. To give you a feel for the scope, I know the picture's not great, but you can see two workers-
Oh, my.
-down in the very bottom of the pit there, working, and this is where they're preparing the channel for the new screw. And of course, this is a new bracket up top. This is what your new screw looks like. It's sitting on the yard, it's fully painted, ready to go in here in a couple of weeks. This is not, is this installed yet, Rob?
No.
No, it's not installed yet. Okay, so the things are moving quickly here, as, as they, they've finished a lot of the hard work. The other two pump stations we touched were C and D Station. They are return sludge, which is more in the biological process of your plant, and they're both the same. So we're doing the same scope of work to C and D Station, yeah. And this one, we actually had kind of a unique solution, working with your staff and working with some other folks that had conquered the same challenge. We actually are able to, and have been able to, get rid of these screws. This is a picture of C1, which we originally planned to replace, and then once we got working with your staff, we all, you can see your two staff members working down here. This is a, this is a very dangerous place. When these screws are turning, you can see there's not a whole lot of room for air there if something were to fall or, or, or an accident were to happen. So what we decided to do, and we, this was all blessed by you as a council, was transition these to a different style pump, make it more operator-friendly, and your long-term costs are much less, because we're getting rid of these screws. You can, I'll go back up to this picture. You can just imagine how expensive it is to pull that and, and replace, do this kind of work. All this was about half a million dollars just to get one of these in. So we're, on C and D Stations, we're able to get away from that. So we did something a little bit different. You can see in the background of these pictures, you can see the screw there. This one, I can't tell from the angle, yeah, both of these screws are still in service. But you can see how we have this structural steel frame going in above everything. And then fast forward, you can see the deckwork going in, you see the pipe work through the wall. This is new FRP grating and decking going in. You still see the screws in service here. And then fast forward to just a couple of weeks ago, this station is now operational in its new, in its new configuration. Of course, they're still touching up and, and fixing, and finishing the scope of work, but this is actually working. The screws that were here, they are gone, and the pumps are now down in the pit. The screws that were here, they are gone and the pumps are now down in the pit. The benefit of this is you no longer, for one, you no longer have the dangerous environment that we heard, we interact with your staff often and a lot of what they told us during this project is, I'm going to use the word fear, that wasn't their term, that's my term, but because I was afraid when I was, when I would get down there with them and work. But some anxiety, I guess, about being down there. So now, they can work up top. If they have to pull a pump, they can use a boom truck that's parked on the deck up top, or parked on the yard up top and they can reach over and pull it. The replacement cost on the new pumps we have in is only about $30,000 instead of $300,000 for the other ones. So we, so far, when, and this one's operational, we think this has been a good change. So that's all I have as far as update on where we are right now. I want to transition into a topic of some added cost and maybe some scope change, but before I do that, any questions on where we are so far?
Go ahead, Adam.
Okay. So we have encountered something, and we noticed this first back in the end of last year, and then we really noticed it after you had some flooding in January and February. And it's probably easier if I just fast forward to where this is. This is right behind Lince's Automotive. The Lince's Automotive would be right up the hill. In fact, the picture you saw just a few minutes ago was taken from the same place that I stood taking this picture. Across the creek over here is Hamilton Avenue or Hamilton Street, I'm not sure which. Well, this line across the creek is the one that we are concerned with. And we've, it was one of those things where it, you see all these trees are all cut down and all gone. And I'm sure as you drove by last fall, you noticed as they were all gone. We just could not observe the state of this pipe in its entirety when all those trees and the brush was up. So what we're talking about, Mayor Protim, is the cost and the feasibility of replacing this. And we want to talk to you about this and answer questions about it, then we can come back with a formal change order amount, if that's your pleasure. A different angle here, sorry, wrong direction. Different angle, so this is actually, excuse me, this picture's looking downstream to the south. This is looking upstream to the north. And you can see how it's on a kind of a precarious pier here and we saw some changes to this pier. Pieces fell off after the flood at the end of January. So what we would propose to do, and the concept is that we have, we have funds available, we have forces mobilized and we have a solution, and we have identified an issue that we think is worth resolving, is contributing, so, or not contributing, but allocating funds to resolve this issue while we're here. And this is actually an example of a scope of work that was in this project. This is just north of Second Street. That's the Second, sorry, Second Avenue Bridge. This was a line that we had worked with your staff that we knew was compromised and we did, we replaced this as part of the scope of this contract. And this kind of gives you a feel for the dexterity of how we would replace it. These are two I-beams with the pipe straddled in between the two.
I believe isn't that, isn't that right at 52? That's right at 52 and Second Street?
It is, correct. Yeah, in fact, I'm standing, you know, over my left shoulder, taking this picture would be the old Gerald's Building right there.
Right, okay, that's what I thought.
So if we go back a little bit, what we're proposing is basically getting rid of this and replacing it with something like you see here. Now, we have, we haven't, not developed a formal change order amount yet. We have worked with the contractor on the scope and the budget that has been given to us is about $75,000. So that's kind of a ballpark of what we're talking about. To answer the question maybe before I should ask, this is a view of where we are financially with this project. We started construction with 270,000 in contingency and we've spent 19 of it so far. And we're, we're close enough to the end that the end is near. So there's still a healthy contingency. I should add, Mayor Protim, that we do have somewhere less than $10,000 of some cleanup items that will be added to this and then there'll probably be a couple of deducts that'll come with that. So this number may move a little bit, but not enough to change the premise of what we're, what we're talking about here.
So to keep everybody on the same page, this, you were actually talking about number eight right now, which is the change order. So he is up, he just, his first presentation was, that's okay, was on number seven and we're on number eight now. Yes, Ms. Louder?
Yes, ma'am.
Go back to that last slide.
Here?
Now, is that completed?
It is completed and back in service.
It looks sort of shabby here with the skirt up.
So I should add, when this, when this picture was taken, it was not completed. It is completed now. Forgive me, yes.
Where does the other line run to, the one you're going to replace?
It runs, it serves a collection of houses on Hamilton Avenue. And we have looked at, actually, could we reroute this a different way so it didn't, so we could get it away from crossing the creek. Aerial crossings, as your staff will tell you, are, anytime you can avoid them, it's helpful. But in this particular case, it's not feasible to do that.
Are there questions of Adam? So as I understand it, this is just a recommendation. We don't have anything, we don't have, there's no fiscal anything attached to it right now because you've not come with a change order.
Correct.
This is for information only.
Correct.
Should we want to do this, then you will come back with us with a change order.
That is correct.
Okay?
Yes.
Any other questions or concerns?
Well, it's something that needs to be done.
It is, in our opinion, and I believe in the opinion of your staff, it is something that needs to be done. And I should add, we have confirmed, the funding agency that funding, is funding this project has, will allow this to be an eligible cost, so that they will fund this.
So it's actually a find, if you will, since you all have been working, as another find that it does need to be done. And that's what we pay him for, is to find those things, not, not too many of them, but to find them.
Yes, ma'am.
So any other questions, comments? Mr. Ferris?
Just to make sure we're all on the same page here, this was not it as part of the original scope.
Right.
So this is not a change that, to the project as we approved. As they got in here, they saw that need. It's something we're going to have to address at some point. So we have some funds available in the existing project. So the thought being that they're mobilized, they're there, it's design work and construction is already taking place. We can add that to the project. It's not something within the project that they've noticed that needs to change. It's something we're saying, if we don't, we're going to have to address it at some point in the near future anyway.
Correct. It's a find. It's a help find. Let's do it.
That is correct. So again, I don't need action from you tonight. I really wanted the feedback and the mayor Protim, I don't, I try, we try not to bring items to you and request them on the spot. So I think allowing the opportunity to ask questions and give us feedback is what we're really doing tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you too, Rob, for coming. Not asking for any more money. Yes, sir.
Two more minutes, if I may. I don't remember if this was on the agenda, but Mr. Ferris had asked, we give a quick update on the funding that was received. So if you, real quickly, in the fall, you approved a funding application relative to Phase Three. And we did get word at the February meeting that your funding was approved. Unfortunately, and somewhat known, it was approved only as loan funds, so a 20-year, 1 point, and let's see, I have this right here, 1.38% interest. Kind of give you a feel for that debt payment, which is really what was driving this. No action required at this time, but I wanted you to know that the funding has been approved and we'll be coming back to you with Ms. Redwine's and Mr. Ferris's permission and blessing and direction on which way to go here.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Great evening.
Thank you.
Stay safe and stay well.
Wash your hands.
That's right. Agenda item number nine, information is in the packet. Any questions from anyone?
Yes, I'd like for the chief to come up and give some information on that.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
All right, I've got, had a request for an update on the homicides that the city of Alamoor has experienced over the last 10 years. I pulled the data on this information and noticed that we had 11 homicides in the last 10 years inside the city of Alamoor. In your packet, it states that only six of those, correction on that, only five of those were solved. This past Friday, we were able to obtain warrants for one of the persons responsible for the latest homicide that we had back in February of eight, February 8th of this year. That investigation continues and we're not done with it yet. That was just the first of several that we should have. So we actually are at six now. We've actually solved six of those 11. The six that we have open now are Trey Watkins, Walter Leek, Quanterius Watkins, Brian Smith, and Joseph DeSosa. Now, in each one of these cases, I just want to make sure that you're aware, when we receive that phone call that we have a homicide, that we will be working, our First Avenue approach is to contact the North Carolina State Bureau of Investigation. They come down and actually help us with the crime scene and they help us with the investigation part as well. As you would probably can imagine, they have way more resources than we do. Each one of the cases you see solved and unsolved, that was the particular case here. They helped us with those investigations. In 2017, after the homicide of Mr. Leek, we asked for the Stanley County Crime Stoppers to help us out. And that was going through a transition phase. I think Mr. Bradford Behringer had that program, I think he owns BRS in Richfield. He transferred that Stanley County Crime Stoppers over to the chiefs and the sheriff at the time. About early 19, I was able to get ahold of Kristi Buchanan, who is at the community college. She is helping steer this program. While it's not completely finished yet, the, so there needs to be some more bank paper signed and things like that. I did get ahold of her and we were able to put the money value on each of these cases. They will produce $1,000 and then we'll have $1,000 that we'll add to it. So each one of these cases has a $2,000 reward for any information leading to the arrest and conviction.
Of the open ones, of the open ones.
Of the ones that are unsolved. Yes, ma'am.
So is that something that was just recently implemented?
Yes, sir, and that was recently implemented. Even though the finalized paperwork has not been completed yet, she said that we could go ahead and advertise for that and she would make sure that that was paid out in the event someone did come forward.
Okay. Because when I requested this, I had no idea that Mr. Behringer had been doing that part with Crime Stoppers, you know?
Yeah.
And I was just curious why we had, excuse me?
He's been doing it forever.
Yeah. Each time I had sent him a letter, we always received it back, yes, go ahead with it. But that one on Walter Leek, that's the one they, that was the one he notified me. I no longer do that and you'll need to get with your chief. So I did at the time and it was in that transition phase. We couldn't do it at the time, but we can now.
Just curious, do you have any idea how many homicides we have in the county other than Alamoor over that period?
I did reach out to two agencies likewise of our size. One was Lexington Police Department and one was Ashborough Police Department. I only heard back from Ashborough, they had 14 in the last 10. But they solved 11 of theirs.
Mr. Bramlett, were you asking, you asked about the county?
Stanley County, I have not reached out to the county, no, sir.
I'd just be curious to know what.
Further questions?
Yeah. Now, I think I spoke with you about four or five months ago about possible follow-up with the families.
Yes.
Of the open cases. Have we done that?
I have sat down with Joseph DeSosa's mother. At the time, she was living in, on Inger Street. I have sat down with her. I have not sat down with Ms., or Quante Watkins's mother. And Brian Smith is out of Concord. We're having a hard time reaching him as well. The investigator has reached out to Walter Leek's folks.
And I'm not naive to the fact that I do know that any murder, you know, it's a two-way street, you know? There's measures that law enforcement can do and then there's an aspect that the community can take, you know? And we live in a, I guess, for lack of better words, no snitch-type culture nowadays, you know? But what can we do to break that barrier of silence, you know? So that we can start getting some closure to some of these cases?
Yes, sir. One of the problems that I have noticed, our Sixth Amendment gives us the right to face our accusers. So therefore, anybody that says this person did it, then they have to come to court and say, I seen this occur, swearing on the Bible. Getting past that Sixth Amendment is going to be our toughest straw because nobody wants to be labeled as a snitch. Nobody wants to come forward and say, I know what happened. Even the ones, the shootings that we respond to and they survived the shooting, they continue to tell us, we'll take care of it ourselves. Even though we're there saying, listen, just give us some information, what happened, they don't, they don't want to do that. So we find that it's an uphill struggle all the time and especially when one passes away, all we have is the evidence that's left at the scene, short of someone raising their hand saying, I seen what happened. So your question was, what can we do? Is to be vigilant, encourage your constituents at all times to work with the police. We are here to work with them. We have a lot of tools at our hand, but it takes that magic person to come forward and that says that I seen this occur or I know what happened. A lot of times, the ones that do come forward, it's the streets are saying, and then they provide the information that they hear, which is great. We take that and run with it as far as we can. Unfortunately, when we take that to the district attorney's office, we can't, you know, subpoena the streets and that's what they tell us. So we have to back up and go find someone and catch them in a lie or something of that nature to try to bring forth the truth. And so that's, it's always uphill struggle. So, you know, just support law, local law enforcement, or all law enforcement and any, anything that you know come forward. The reward money is always confidential. You don't have to give your name. But again, we'll, we'll work with anyone the best way we can.
Chief, what about the, what about the anonymous tip line? Go ahead.
Yeah, the rewards come from BRS, we believe. Mr. Behringer provided his own money to place in that account. Now that Kristi Buchanan at the community college has taken that over, she has discussed with me, we're going to need to start doing some fundraising to place that money back in there, whatever has been taken out, so that we can keep this program running.
That's good. Mr. Aldridge?
What is the, what is the amount of activity or level of activity since we have, you know, several of these unsolved homicides? How active is the anonymous tip line? Do we, are we getting anything on that?
Sure, sure. We get a lot of information on the anonymous tip line. Unfortunately, we can't always use everything that we come in. We just have to sort of filter those out and see if it's, if it's headed in the right direction. Because you get a lot of what-ifs and you need to look at this person, you need to look at that person. It helps, but it's not golden, if you will. You just have to take each one, case by case, and see if it's headed in the right direction.
On the anonymous tip line, and I don't know exactly how it works, but do they, they don't actually talk, do they leave a, basically like a recording or do they talk to somebody? Because, and the reason I ask that, someone was telling me that they tried to provide information on it and I don't know which case this was, but said they almost felt like a suspect, they said, whenever they tried to provide some information. So that's why I ask, you know, how anonymous is it, you know?
Yeah, I would take it if that was the case, they may have spoken with someone. And a lot of times when we receive information, if you, if you told me that you know Councilman Aldridge did something, I might say, now, how did you know? Did you see it or did you just hear from this council member that they heard that, you know? So sometimes it becomes a, it almost can feel interrogation, but we get to make, we have to make sure that it's information that we can move forward with it at the district attorney's office. We've, we've even had situations where we finally had someone that seen something occur in the district attorney's office say that the person that gave us this information is not credible. And you're like, really? You know? And so you're just, you're just always hit from, from each side. But back to your one main question, you was asking if, is it like a recording? And it is. It's anonymous recording. We can't trace the call. We don't go looking for this number that pops up. We just take that information and we try to see if we can utilize it.
Councilman Bramlett?
In those five murders, you arrested six people. How many of them are in jail right now?
One of them was just released.
Yes, sir, that would have been the last one, Hassan Webster. He was just released.
Jimmy Parker.
I believe Tony Hearn and Lindsey Lentz is still in jail. I'll have to check on Jimmy Parker.
He was released for the murder.
He was released, okay. Ryan Eford, I believe he's still serving.
Mr. Aldridge?
So I think to follow up with the council member Townsend's point a minute ago, there's, there are two sides, but I think we as a community really have to encourage our, to what the chief said, our constituents to come together, whether it's through anonymous phone calls, whether, however we can communicate, because there's, you know, this is, this is a big issue and we need to make sure if you see something, you say something. And however, we need to communicate with our, with our constituents to make sure that they feel comfortable, you know, coming to law enforcement and there needs that, there needs to be that level of trust there, that level of confidence that if they do come forward, that something's going to be done. Because, I mean, we all want to live, I don't care where you live, we all want to be safe in our communities, so.
Yes. And so something else to keep in mind as well, anytime you deal with, or not every time, but most of the time you deal with homicides, it's because of other related crimes that are involved. So because of that, if you were there, you know, and then you're admitting to a crime that you were doing that the police don't know about. So that's another reason why you don't get a lot of people coming forward. That's just something to keep in mind of why people stay quiet and don't always tell you.
Go down or something like that.
It could be narcotics, it could be some type of conspiracy where you're conspiring to commit crime against someone else.
Mr. Aldridge?
So, so the number three on the top list right there, the, the date was 9/2 of 2015. Did I just hear that the person that was convicted of that's already released? Is that correct?
9/2 of 2015, yes, Jimmy Parker.
Yes.[1741.86]
And that was the date of death that probably, he probably didn't go to court for another year, year and a half after that. Would you say, Chief?
That would be correct. And even number five, six-twenty-five of eighteen.
He's already out.
This, and the person arrested is already out?
That's the one out there on Anderson.
That is on Anderson Road. And I told you, he's out. He was just sentenced and he got seventeen months.
Okay.
He was just sentenced. He was just sentenced with this.
With that.
So that's how long it took to get into court and got a.
And his sentence was seventeen months?
Seventeen months, yeah.
Wow.
Structured sentencing leads a lot to be desired.
Yes.
It does.
It does. And they count the time he sat in there while this was going on.
But I mean, it's still, it's still mind boggling to me if, if the, if the offense or the murder took place on six-twenty-five of 2018, it's now three-sixteen of 2020, the person's already out.
No, he's just been sentenced.
He is not out. I did, I did say he was out. He is not. It was just sentenced.
He was just been sentenced.
Okay, okay.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. All right, yes, what I understood, okay.
Any other questions or concerns of the chief? Thank you for this and as you have indicated, we still have five open.
Five open.
Cases. And if folks know, call the, call the tip line.
Call the tip line. You can speak to us anonymously and we will work with you in any way possible.
And there's still money out there through the Crime Stoppers?
Two thousand dollars on each of these for the arrest and conviction of the person responsible for each homicide.
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Next item, agenda item is the department to monthly reports, item number ten. Are there questions or concerns? If not, moving on, the consent agenda has five issues on it. We can take it in one motion or we can bring any of them off and do them individually.
Motion to approve entire consent agenda.
That's right. I was gonna mention that. With that motion, I will give you an update that I heard earlier today and Mr. Fears heard as well. Outside number eleven, the YMCA Kids Triathlon has been either postponed slash or canceled. Do we want to approve it, council, at now, the road closure? And when they give us another date, they can just give us that date?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that fine? I had understood it might be, have been canceled, but it may have been postponed. So, Mr. Fears, Cindy, if you catch that, we're gonna approve eleven with a date change, should there be one, okay? Any other questions or concerns? Motion to approve the consent agenda. There is a second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. I will ask that council pay close attention to one of the issues that you just approved is number fifteen, and that is a date that we will need to get together again for that personnel policy workshop. That was something that we answered in a, an email as to when we were gonna do it. So make sure you get that on your calendars. Now to new business, outside issue number sixteen, the award of the inferral bid for the landfill gravity leche sewer line. Who is going to talk about this?
I can give a brief overview, then if there's some specific questions, our public works director, Ross Holzhausser, can fill in some blanks on maybe some of the technical elements. So this project has been discussed for at least two or three years now, and we actually had it in the budget at one time. But as you know, we've had two other large projects taking place at the landfill that had some complexities and challenges. So what we recommended to city council was that we not go forward with the project when it was budgeted, but we put it into a capital project account so that the money or majority of it would be there ready to go when the project was ready to go. So we are at the point now where we are ready to move forward with the project. We received bids on the project and that is in your agenda package in some of the detail. Three bidders being Dawn Development, BRS, and state utility contractors. When the project was bid, of course, there's a bid package and within that package, as we've seen with other bids, we have alternates. And if we do X, then what's your bid? And if we choose this option, what's, what's the bid? So in the bid package, there was some information provided about some fill material. Basically, the base bid was bid that the, the borrowed material would be provided onsite at the landfill, if possible. Our engineers have told us that that is not possible in this project. There's not enough. So the bid with the contractor bringing in the material is what we need to go with. So we are, so we have three bidders still with Dawn Development, probably about twenty-five hundred dollars. I say probably, right at twenty-five hundred dollars less than BRS. But within those bid specifications, we also have specific details concerning how the bid is to be put together. There was a total of six percent allowable for mobilization cost. The Dawn Developments bid had significantly higher mobilization cost of eleven point four percent. So our city attorney reviewed that and found that to be a material issue with the bid. And so in the end, what we're recommending is the BRS bid with the provision that they provide the own borrowed material of three-hundred-eighty-one-thousand-five-seventy-seven-fifty.
And so I've got the bid sheet up in front of me and I don't see that specific amount on the bid sheet.
Yes.
I see a three-eighty-oh-seventy-seven.
It's down, down below.
But I, I don't see that total for some reason. Do you see?
Yeah.
On the second sheet? Is it on your second sheet of bid sheet? Because I don't see it on mine and I'm, hold on.
Are you talking about the alternate bid totals?
I'm just, the amount that, that Mr. Fairs just gave us.
Okay, so where we, where we formulated those totals would be if you took the alternate bid total on page two, it would be item E-one.
Okay.
What we would have to do is we are gonna substitute E-one with the select backfill material on the first cover bid sheet.
Okay.
It would be a D-eleven.
Okay, thank you for that.
So if you minus, if you minus out D-eleven's totals, then add in E-one's totals, that's where we came up with the totals.
Very good. I just knew, I did not see, I see, I saw a bid price at the bottom of page one underneath number thirteen, and I didn't see, thank you very much. That gives me that. So the bid total now with BRS being, is three-eighty-one, what was that? Is there a motion to?
I move we award the contract to BRS.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those approve, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, the same.
To ask a question while the third one was so high.
That was interesting, wasn't it?
That was a big difference.
The third was about three times, I know.
I've heard that just recently, that they have so much work. That some of these companies that are absolutely swamped, just throw a figure out there and if they get it, it's an incredible windfall for them. If they don't, it's no big deal.
We heard that same thing about the public housing.
We sure did. We sure did. Thank you.
That's where I heard that.
Thank you, Ross. And number seventeen, I guess I'm looking at you, Mr. Fairs.
Sure. As council, well, it's a complicated project. If everyone will remember that we have a construction manager at risk that bid a majority, is handling a majority of the police department headquarters project. Right from the get-go, there were several things that we said we would handle ourselves and not run through the contract and have any sort of additional cost that we would do it ourselves. So one of the things that we came to you earlier with was IT costs for the building, some technology, security, access control, those sorts of things and the technology in the building. One of the other items that we were handling ourselves was landscaping. So we are at the point where landscaping needs to be installed and just letting council know that that's about what we're looking at for landscaping and irrigation. What we do want to go with ultimately is we want obviously some irrigation. Secondly, something that's low maintenance, also attractive, but also takes security and safety into mind. So low maintenance, low growing, but attractive landscaping at the site. That's an iconic building in Albemarle. It's always been very well-kept and with very nice landscaping and we hope to save some of the plants, the vegetation that is there now, but a lot of construction, a lot of time has passed. Some things have been overgrown. We can't use it all, but that's what we're looking at. Well, that's what, that's what we're looking at going back with and those are things that we knew we were going to have to pay separately above and beyond what was in the original construction manager at risk contract. So just want to make council aware that we're getting ready to move forward on that phase of the project.
And this is, this is not money that we had budgeted?
No, we have, we have, well, we, not through the contract.
Not through the contract.
But we have money in the project budget for this. It was always anticipated.
And it looks great, although it really looks naked right now.
It's barren right now.
It sure does.
We're getting ready to plant back and that's, that's where we are.
And I was down there about four o'clock today and looked like nothing. There was nothing being done. It looked very, very dead down there.
So just for information.
Is that information or do you want a motion?
Yeah.
It doesn't say that we have any.
Yeah, I don't know there's anything to, for council to approve. Just want to make you aware.
Very good.
That's an expenditure we're getting ready to undertake.
And still looking at what date for completion?
Still looking at, with the construction manager at risk this month, early next month.
We still need to do a walkthrough, but with the things, the way things are right now, I think that's just, yeah, we're supposed to be home. We might not get to do a walkthrough.
So just, just another item while we're talking about it. Furniture is another thing we're doing ourselves and we're trying to handle. Chief Dillon is, is quoting off the state contract, trying to get a standard set of furniture, a certain line off the state contract, which means it has been pre-bid. So that's something else we pulled out of the contract that we're gonna do ourselves. That will be something just like this that we'll come back with as well. Again, we've planned for it in the project budget.
Okay. Moving forward, item number eighteen. Interesting that I asked that this be placed on the agenda last week. If you all remember about eleven years ago, and this is all within the attachment, but about eleven years ago or so, whenever the community inn was established, Homes of Hope came to us and asked us if we would give the money to do the water hookup and we did that, or the tap, pay for the tap. Fast forward a couple, probably eighteen months ago, there was a piece of land over off of Crown Point, which is off of West Main Street, that Homes of Hope has been able to be, get now. They have, they have purchased and they are going to put two, what they say to me are duplexes, but they're actually four individual homes over there. The issue with these homes is they will be affordable. It's not section eight, it's not low income. It is truly affordable housing. They are following the federal guidelines of not charging more than thirty percent of a person's income for a person to actually rent these, these places. This will not be a free place for them to live, such as transitional housing, which they already have. But this would be truly four affordable housing units. That will be our first in the city when you think about truly affordable housing. We all talk about it and every time you go anywhere, that's all people are talking about is affordable housing that folks can call their own. They have come to us now. On that piece of property as it was, there was one water and one sewer. And now that the property has been divided, they need another sewer and three water taps. I've run this by Judy and folks with utilities have been out there and they have acknowledged that this is what they need. This would, each of those taps is six hundred dollars. So they, we're talking about twenty-four hundred dollars. That they have asked that we place on the agenda and I told them they didn't need to be here. I thought that we all knew what Homes of Hope did and that I would present it. I wish I were not chairing this meeting because if I were not right here, I would do something if I were sitting right there. But the request is of us. I believe it speaks volumes for us if we were to move forward to do this as the foundation, because it's one of the things that has to be there to begin with, but as a foundation for true affordable housing in the city. So questions? Anybody got questions?
Twenty-four hundred for total is what we're looking at?
Yep, that's exactly right.
I move approval.
Is that the coast, is that the cost, excuse me, that the city can do it for or is it the cost that they charge?
That is the, very good question. Hold on to that, Martha. Let's answer that question, Ms. Lauter. That is what, that we charge anybody to do it for, okay? That is how much the charge would be, but we do it. The city actually does it. Isn't that right, Judy? Would you come forward if you will? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but she, that's a good question, Ms. Lauter. So, thank you. Thank you, Judy, for coming up to explain.
Oh, you're welcome.
Yes, Ms. Lauter, that's the charge that we would charge everybody that got a water or sewer tap. Six hundred dollars.
So how much does it cost us to do?
I don't have that amount or that cost right now in front of me, but I could get it for you if you'd like. But it would just be for maybe two pieces of equipment, a pickup truck and two individuals that would do it.
Thank you, Ms. Redwine. Thank you very much. So if we do this, should we put the amount in it, Mr. Fairs, or that we just, should we just acknowledge the three water taps and one sewer tap?
I think what council ultimately is being asked to do is to waive the fee.
Right.
If we would do the work anyway.
Right, that's exactly right.
And because the, the amount of work could vary from project to project, that's why we charge a six hundred dollar flat fee or a flat fee for any type of tap. We don't know exactly how much time and effort's gonna go into it. It's, it's sort of an average. So what we're doing is waiving the six hundred dollar fee and we will do the work.
Any problem doing that for nonprofit precedents, anything like that?
We did it for the community inn, for Homes of Hope for the community inn, eleven or twelve years ago, correct? In that, twelve, eleven or twelve years ago.
That's correct. I guess anything you do, somebody else could ask for the same thing. I think what council, Mayor Pro Tem Hall was alluding to, that we're also partners with, with Homes of Hope. We're in the affordable housing business with the operation of our Department of Public Housing. We have Homes of Hope headquarters in our building where we pay certain overhead costs for the operation. So we could view this as something that is part of our core activities and operations.
Good question. Thank you very much. Ms. Hughes?
So I think the request then would be is to waive the fees to Homes of Hope and supply to them the three water taps and the one sewer tap by the city.
Sure.
There's a motion on the table by Ms. Hughes and second by Mr. Whitley. Any other questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Thank you all very much. Eighteen A, as we moved on to an agenda adjustment, and that is the coronavirus update or to discuss. So, Mr. Fairs?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Hall. So just to give council an update on what we're doing, it's, you know, it's an issue like we've not seen before and best practice is in terms of response and change hourly as the situation evolves. So really, our primary focus is the continuation of critical services that the city provides while keeping employees and those we serve safe. So I want to share a few things that we have done already to protect the public and address what we're being confronted with. We've canceled parks and recreation programs and activities. We've actually closed parks and recreation facilities. But with that said, I want to be specific in acknowledging that we are still, the parks itself are still open, but the facilities, interior buildings are closed at this point. Obviously, as you can see from this meeting, we've implemented social distancing where it is possible. We've got changes that we've made in other operations already today. We've evaluated other policies and procedures and practices where we could do other such changes. And we've also evaluated protective equipment needs for our employees to give them what they need to be safe, feel safe, show them that we're taking care of them and that we want what's best for everybody. We've tried to communicate to employees the best that we can and will continue to do so concerning our plans to keep everybody safe. We have temporarily suspended utility cutoffs at this point and I have an ask of council regarding that later. We've developed a work from home policy for positions where this is possible. We've also developed an overall action plan. We have planned weekly, weekly conference calls with state DH, DHH and the city's management team and others concerning the evolving status. And we have other actions that are being considered and hopefully we don't get to that, but we are doing a lot of things now and a lot of things are changing and we're having to rack to things that I would have never thought of a week ago. So there's that. Moving forward, the three issues I'd like council just to consider tonight, one is just more of acknowledgement, two are actual action items. One is, I'd like council to vote to continue with the suspension over utility cutoffs. I've made that decision temporarily until we can get to this point. I'd like council to confirm that that's what they want to do until the emergency is over. It does not release anybody from their responsibility to pay their bill, pay the full amount. We're just waiving the cutoffs because of the public health issue. We're just waiving the cutoffs because of the public health issue that we're confronted with. Number two, there's a resolution in front of everybody.
On that one, do you have in mind of collecting that money after all this is over with?
That is our intention, yes. And so people are still paying bills, of course, as it stands now, but because of the health issue, don't want to disconnect everybody at this point. We're telling people to use warm water and soak, wash their hands, and that sort of thing. Disconnecting utilities is counter to that. So it is our intention to still collect that money, and there's a temporary reprise on that. But the bill is not forgiven. It does not go away. We'll still do everything we can to, and hope and expect people to pay, and we will try to collect.
So they will be told that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
The second item is, there's a resolution in front of you to basically provide a bank of hours equivalent to two weeks of work equivalent leave for employees affected by the virus until the emergency is over. Doesn't mean everyone's going to take two weeks. It means if there's a situation outlined in that resolution related to the health issue while there's a declared emergency, that we provide folks up to, we say two weeks of work, but everyone's work schedule within a two-week period is different. You've got 40-hour employees, you've got 42-hour week employees in the police department, you've got a much larger work week in the fire department, because there were 24-hour shifts. So this is a situation that nobody, you know, expected, that's a little bit unusual. We want employees to be safe. We also know that there's, like, right now, school being out, people are having to rotate with a spouse or somebody else in terms of childcare. How do we get that done? So what you're seeing is a lot of organizations trying to support their employees with this issue the best we can. So that's what that resolution does. And then third is just sort of a, want council to be aware that during this issue, while it's in this emergency situation, that there will have to be some decisions made prior to the next council meeting on short notice as things evolve, and just want council to know and support me and staff in our decision-making. I know maybe everyone won't agree 100%, but just know that we're doing our best in our decision-making to protect the employees and the public, and we're going to do what we can to keep everybody safe.
So earlier today, whenever Mr. Ferris and I were talking that the mayor would not be here, I asked him that part of, I knew he was going to make this presentation. This is the email that he actually sent to us yesterday, yesterday morning, Sunday morning. And I just asked him to please print that off, because basically what he has added in his ask tonight was stuff that we were told in an email yesterday. So as I understand it, there are, there look to be, needs to be three different motions, and one of those would be, the very first one would be outside number one, do we, authorizing...